Well, hello, everybody. It's so wonderful to see all of you here on a Friday evening, and I'm thrilled to have such a great turnout for this call. We really had a lot of registrations. I'm Jen Chandler. I'm the Director of Operations here at Elder's Climate Action. And at ECA, we really strive to bring you programming opportunities that help you engage in climate action. And so this afternoon, I'm really excited to introduce Ariel Schwernoff from US. She's the US Banks and Campaign Manager from Stop the Money Pipeline Coalition. And Elder's Climate Action has actually been a member of the Stop the Money Pipeline Coalition, I believe, since its inception. And we really felt very strongly about the power of this work. We've really seen how this work targeting the financial sector is changing the conversation and really deepening the impact that we're having in targeting the fossil fuel industry. So it's really important work. Tonight, Ariel is going to join us to provide an overview of a new campaign started by Stop the Money Pipeline called Blame Wall Street and the efforts that are happening nationwide this fall. She's going to join us to discuss the tools and resources, but also the training and coaching opportunities that are available through Stop the Money Pipeline for any individuals who want to host an action. And she's also going to share with us tonight about some of the actions that are already being planned across the country. Hopefully, by the end of this call, all of us, including each of you, will be excited and inspired and motivated to plan an action in your community. If we did that, that could be a huge addition of actions to the Stop the Money Pipeline action list for the fall. So I want to extend a really big welcome to Ariel and just let you know that we're very grateful to have you join us here today. And we're very excited to hear what you have to share about these fall plans. So Ariel.
Thank you. And just so I'm aware, about how much time do you want me to spend on this little sharing presentation?
We have 45 minutes total. However, long of that 45 minutes, maybe with a few minutes of Q and A at the end?
Perfect, yeah. Thank you. Well, I'm really glad to be here today. My name's Ariel Schwernoff. I am the US Banks Campaign Manager at Stop the Money Pipeline, which is a coalition of groups trying to end Wall Street's support of the climate crisis. I'm based in New York City on the Nafta land, and I'm really thrilled to be here with you today. So I'm going to share. I have a little presentation that I'm going to share, if that's all right. And we'll go through it, and then we'll just sort of talk about, talk about Blame Wall Street, talk about actions this fall, and answer any questions. Can folks see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome. So this is September. This is actually a presentation from a call we had two days ago. I hope you'll forgive me for the reus. But okay, so first of all, the why, right? Why are we doing this? Why do we care? Presumably, if you're here, you know some amount about the why. We know about the climate crisis, right? We know about the flooding in Pakistan. We know about the heat and drought. I imagine some folks are on the West Coast experiencing a horrible heat wave right now. My family is on the West Coast, and my grandmother is 100 years old and doesn't have air conditioning, and it's been a very worrying week. We know that our planet is changing. Our ecosystem is changing. Lakes are drying up. People are without clean water to drink. Wildfires have destroyed towns across the country, and their smoke impacts our health across the globe. We also know, and I want to emphasize, climate change is not something that is happening to us. It's not natural. It's not inevitable. It's something that is being done to us. And it's something that's being done to us by a variety of actors, but including Wall Street actors. So, whoops, I'll go back. We talk about Wall Street's role in the climate crisis, right? We know that oil companies, we can all say, you know what? ExxonMobil, bad news for the climate, bad news for our communities. You know, BP, Shell, Gazprom, et cetera. But we also know that these companies, my goodness, my computer is kind of freaking out a little bit, but we're good. We also know that these companies would not be able to do anything like what they're able to do without the support of Wall Street. So this is an image from a report called Banking on Climate Chaos, which is released every year by some of our partners at Reinforced Action Network. And it shows the amount of money that Wall Street banks spend financing fossil fuels, right? We know that Exxon, BP, et cetera, they don't actually have the cash reserves to build new pipelines, like on their own. They need money. They need financing. They need underwriting. They need to stop bonds in order to make this happen. And we can see that the worst, very, very worst banks for climate, for fossil fuels, for fossil fuel expansion are American banks. They're the banks that we have right here, right? So with Chase well out in front, Citibank of America, Top4, we've got Morgan Stanley as well in this top 12. We also know, we like to talk about insurance as well as the sort of soft underbelly of this. Insurance companies not only invest in fossil fuel projects, they insure fossil fuel projects. And without insurance, these projects can't be built. So there are campaigns that are running to get insurers to drop either specific or general fossil fuel projects, right? So without getting insurance, right? The Mountain Valley Pipeline won't be built. So if we can go ahead and insurance, we can also stop the flow of money to fossil fuels. And then we have asset managers, right? These are sort of perhaps somewhat shadowy groups, right? Vanguard, BlackRock have huge amounts of investment in fossil fuel companies. And that, again, with the banks as well, it's our money, right? I have a retirement account in Vanguard, right? And Vanguard is using my retirement money to invest in things that are going to make the planet unlivable for me and my friends and my children. And so our basic philosophy, right? Is like, if we can stop the flow of money, we can stop the flow of fossil fuels. And so that's what we're trying to do. So knowing all that, knowing all that is going on, we've been campaigning on Wall Street for a while. And this fall, we're calling for a wave of escalated actions on Wall Street, specifically trying to connect the climate disasters that we're seeing. We know that this is like, I always say that this is like a really bad time of year for climate anxiety and climate depression, because this is when all sorts of climate disasters are happening, right? We're at the end of a summer of heat waves. We're in peak wildfire season. We're entering peak hurricane season. So we know that, you know, people are suffering and will continue to suffer and have suffered at this time in years past. And we want to lay that at the door of the people responsible, which is to say, Wall Street, and to really push them to change their ways. And yeah, I see in the chat, the city commercial, "Net Zero." Yeah, they're all greenwashing, and they will all say that they have got a climate plan. And if you look at their climate plan, none of the climate plans come anywhere near anything that science says has to happen in order for us to have even a 50% chance of staying under 1.5 degrees. And specifically, just to like get into that a little bit, the International Energy Agency, which is a pretty conservative energy forecaster, released a report last year that said, if we want a 50% chance of staying within 1.5 degrees, we can't have any new fossil fuel expansion starting immediately, so starting in May of 2021. So all these banks will say, oh, yeah, we've got a climate plan. We've got LED buildings. You're net zero by 2050. But they're still funding new expansion, right? And those things are fundamentally incompatible. We can't hit net zero. We can't hit our goals with new expansion. And so we're trying to organize on them all fall, right? Why now? Check for that a little bit. So we're organizing on them all fall, and we're hoping to have actions all across the country so that they feel like they're playing whack-a-mole with us, right? They'll think, oh, we're good. We already had a protest. We're good for now. Oh, no, here's another protest. Here's another protest. Here's another action, something unexpected. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the resources and tools that we have available to support folks in organizing these actions about our targets, because they're needed. We're needed. They have organized money. We have organized people. And I believe in the power of organized people. So this is our map. This is a screenshot from a few days ago. There's a few more events on the map now. I'm showing where things are already happening, right? So we already have some actions scheduled in New York City, in Philadelphia, outside of Philadelphia, Chicago, San Francisco, and Portland, and Los Angeles, as well as we also have Albany now on the map, and DC. So if you're in any of those cities, I would encourage you, and I'm going to drop a link at the end that has a link to all the resources that I'm about to go through, so no worries about having to write everything down quickly. I would encourage you to go to this map, put in your zip code, see if there's something near you. If you're looking at this map and you're like, I don't live anywhere near any of these dots, I would encourage you to think about trying to organize something, right? And that would just be so cool. And it can be at any bank branch, any kind of target. And if you're struggling with that, we can help you figure out what makes a good target for you. I've used the term escalated action a few times, and I do actually just want to clarify a little bit about what we mean by that. Sometimes we hear escalated action, and we hear everyone is going to get arrested. And if that's the direction that you want to go in, that's great, and we're happy to support you in that. But what we mean by escalated is really, what is at our growing edge, right? What is at the edge of our comfort zone? If we have done protests outside of a bank branch before, what's our next step, right? Can we go inside the branch? Can we hold the space for longer? Can we go to the home of one of our targets? Can we go to the branch every single day for a week? If we haven't done protests before, organized an action before, escalation is organizing something for the first time. So we know that the climate crisis is becoming worse. Things are escalating. The crisis is escalating. And so it's important for all of us to, again, figure out where our comfort zone is and take one step outside of it to make this happen. So just in terms of the resources that we have, we have an incredible action toolkit. It's going to walk you through eight of these of running a fantastic action, choosing your targets, choosing your targets, the roles that you might need in your action, a sample press release, a sample media advisory, all sorts of some action ideas from things that people have done in the past. This is a great document to get started, to read through if this is something that you're interested in doing. We also have three trainings coming up this fall, and these are open to anyone, even if you aren't planning an action, but we hope that they support you in doing so. First, we have an action planning one-on-one training. That's going to be next Thursday. And that's just going to go through the basics of organizing an action. What do you need available? What materials do you need? Who do you need with you? What is understanding your action logic, right? And the pressure you're putting on your targets. Patrick Houston is a fantastic organizer, fantastic action leader. I've worked with him for a long time, and I'm really excited about this training. We also have a training on basics of civil disobedience. So if you do decide that you want to incorporate civil disobedience into your action, this training will go over what are the kinds of roles and resources you need to do that in a manner of relative safety for yourself. Sam has also been in the movement. Sam Corbin has also been in the movement for a really long time. She's super cool, and I think that'll be a really fun training. And then finally, we have a training on using art in your action. So that'll go into both incorporating art into your action logic as well as some specific skills to use art in protests, including wheat pasting, other kinds of skills. And that's with David Solnit, who's an incredible artist, incredible activist, and has done some really impactful art actions. So these are all free. You know, part of them are going to be for people who are organizing actions this fall. But even if that's not available, even if that's not possible for you, you're still welcome to attend these trainings and scale up. We also have action coaching. So if you want to organize an action, you're like, I just need a little bit more help or a little bit more accountability, or want to be able to check in with somebody, we can connect you with an action coach, somebody who will meet with you regularly, once a week, even more, if you need, while you're planning your action. I would specifically recommend this if you're thinking of doing an action that feels new to you, you know, or you're excited about doing an action that feels new or challenging to you or an action that requires any kind of civil disobedience. But even if you're doing a protest or rally, and you think that you could, like the support of an action coach would be helpful for you, it's something that we have a lot of people who are really excited to offer. We also have action grants. So, you know, sometimes the difference between a good and a great action is going to be a beautiful banner, or a great videographer, or being able to pay a frontline speaker. So we have grants available up to $1,000 for groups who are taking action with us this fall. It's a really easy form. It should take less than 10 minutes to fill out. And we're hoping to give all the money in our grant pool away to help make actions fantastic. And that's up to $1,000 and up to $1,500 for BIPOC and frontline-led organizations. Arts and songs. So we also have some incredible art, much of the art that you could see in this presentation, we have available for folks in a couple of ways. First, people can download it onto their computer and print it out themselves. But also, we can mail it to you for free. And we'll mail it to you as newsprint. So with that, you can either wheat paste it in a location that would be impactful in your community, on a bank, for example. You can glue it to cardboard to make a sign for a rally, or you can put it up in your community, in a coffee shop, or community center, a kind of public place where people will see it. We also have a song that was written specifically for this campaign, which will be linked in there. It's a really beautiful song, and our arts training will include a teaching on it. But also, it's something folks are welcome to sing at any event that they organize. And then we also can help with mobilization and amplification. So if you're planning something in Phoenix, Arizona, and you want to invite your neighbors, we can send an email to our list of people who also live in Phoenix to help them show up and learn about your event. And then we'll also share, we want to share everyone's beautiful actions on social media. And then finally, we can help with press as well. My colleague Shauna at the Reinforced Action Network is happy to do press pitching and outreach for anyone's action to reach out to press in your area. So that is my sort of brief presentation on what we're doing. And I'm going to drop the resource link in the chat. And yeah, we'd love to sort of take any questions or hear any thoughts or feedback.
Can you share the slides so that all those links will be clickable?
Yes, I'm going to drop, hold on just a second. I'm missing my browser. I'm going to drop a link right now, actually, that has all those clickable links just in a Google Doc, so it'll be easy to find.
Thank you.
And just a point of clarification. Ariel, I believe that when you and I were talking, you had said that the grants, anybody who wants to apply for grant funding, that the grant monies would actually need to go through a nonprofit organization. They could not go directly through to an individual. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. So if you work with a local nonprofit, you don't have to be your own nonprofit. You basically would just need to find a nonprofit that you can work with to accept the money on your behalf.
And so if anybody is interested in applying for a grant and you wanted to use ECA's name, we actually are, we have a parent organization, Elder's Action Network. So we would have to actually seek permission from EAN. So we would need lead time to have conversations and to see if that would even be an option for our members. So just know that if you are interested in applying for grant funds, please contact me. I'll drop my email in the chat box in just a second, because we would need to have a conversation with our parent organization to see if that would even be an option.
Ariel, would you, I'm near San Francisco. Would you recommend that we go to, make a really large protest and go to San Francisco or organize our own, but it would be smaller? What would you say?
I think either is good. I can tell you a little bit more about the San Francisco action, and then maybe you can see if this is something that you're interested in. So on September 20th in San Francisco, there is an event called the Chase Corporate Challenge, which is a road race. And we're planning on turning it into a circus, essentially. So there's going to be a variety of different types of sort of actions on that road race, including, you know, posters and signs along the route, potentially something at the finish gate. We have, we've entered some runners as well to do some actions while they're running. There's going to be a sort of public art show from an organization called Reclaim Paradise, which is an organization based in Paradise, California, which is a city that burned at the campfire. So there'll be art of the destruction of the campfire. So that's what's happening in San Francisco on the 20th. So I'll say, you know, if your group is free on the 20th and that sounds interesting to you, you should absolutely, you know, sign up, and you can sign up on that website. If that's not, if that's not available to you, if the 20th is not a good day for you, or, you know, you're like, we would rather do a protest in a different way, then you should go ahead and do something different. I think both are effective.
Can you give us some other examples of some of the other actions you know of that are planned?
Yeah, absolutely. So in New York, on September 22nd, which is UN Climate Week, which happens in New York, there's going to be a big rally outside of BlackRock. It's going to be attended by a delegation of indigenous people from South America as well as New York communities, basically calling on BlackRock to stop investing in fossil fuels and to adopt a robust and real free fire and informed consent policy for indigenous people and indigenous lands. So that one, I'll be at that one. I'm really excited about that. In Philadelphia, or just outside of Philadelphia, the headquarters of Vanguard. So a group, Equate Earthmaker Action Team, it's going to be doing a couple of actions there, including a prayer action as well as a visit to the home of the CEO of Vanguard. So I would say we love home visits. I think they are a great tactic if they're available to you for really putting pressure on our targets. Chicago, the Chicago action is going to be, is in partnership with the Youth Climate Strike, which is going to be on September 23rd. So it's got a variety of targets, including Chase, but it's going to end in collaboration with the Youth Climate Strike. Los Angeles is a mother's rebellion. So there's going to be a nap-in and laundry party at some, I believe at Chase. So yeah, that's some of what's going on. Yeah.
Carla, do you want to ask your question?
Yes, I do. This is Carla, and I'm in the Twin Cities, Minnesota. And I recently joined Elder Climate and have not done anything. But I also belong to Women Against Military Madness, and we have a subcommittee called End Military Madness Against the Environment. And we meet every Monday from 5:00 to 6:00 at our governor mansion over on Summit. And it seems like this would be a cooperative thing with the local chapter. I don't know, I have not seen a lot with the local chapter. I happened to see something written up in the library, so I contacted them. But do you not have things going on the Twin Cities area?
We do have, ECA does have a local chapter in the Twin Cities, Carla. And I can help connect you. If you want to drop your email in the chat box to me, you can send it to me. I can connect you to those chapter leaders.
No, I already have that information. Thank you. I just thought you might have some activities going on that I don't know about.
We don't currently have--
I really would like you to join us at the governor's mansion on Mondays from 5:00 to 6:00. And we have, oh, we have about 20, 25 people standing on the curb. And that's all having to do with Pipeline 3, and not Pipeline 5 in Michigan, but 3 in Minnesota.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We don't currently have a Twin Cities action plan for this fall, but if your group wants to, I think that would be fantastic. And I think that you're absolutely right, that militarism and climate destruction are extremely intertwined, you know, as issues. US military is one of the largest polluters in the world. So yeah, if that's something that you're interested in, we would love to support you in putting something together. And I know that folks in Minnesota and the Twin Cities have been really showing up for the Line 3 work. So thank you for doing that.
Does anybody else have questions? They would like to ask Ariel? Ariel, I know when we talked last week, we talked about some other sort of types of actions. Maybe you can talk about some examples of other, of sort of smaller scale actions that people might be able to take. And I know one of the things that you, that we talked about, one of the ideas that came up was a lemonade stand, which I've been thinking about. And actually, Ariana and I were talking about the other day about lemonade stand or like bake sale stand or something outside of a bank could be a really great way to sort of start conversations with people. I wonder how long something like that would last before they call security or something, but--
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I think one of the great things about campaigning on banks is that everyone, like, somewhat unfortunately, unfortunately, everyone has got a big bank branch in their community, you know, almost everybody, right? There is a Chase branch, a Citibank of America, Wells Fargo, pretty much everywhere. So any kind, and which means all of them can be targets. So any kind of action at any of those branches, even with a small group, can still be really effective. You know, a lemonade stand outside of the branch with signs or posters passing things out. If you're on a public sidewalk, there's very little risk of interaction with any kind of security or police, so long as you're not blocking, generally speaking, in my experience, there's a low risk of interaction with police or security unless you're blocking the doorway, the entranceway to a building. So if you're, as long as you're not blocking the entrance, as long as you're sort of a little bit to the side, you know, you could probably be there as long as you wanted, or you could go during lunchtime, right? When people are going on their lunch, you know, on their lunch break, or you could go right after work when people are stopping by the bank after work. You know, you could choose an hour or two that you would think would be really high traffic. I love a lemonade stand. In general, we've heard that when people go into the branches, the managers have to, they have to call someone up the chain so people hear about it within the bank. And that can be, going into the branch can be, have a variety of tones from friendly to aggressive, depending on how you take it. Sometimes people will just go in with a small group and say, we have a letter that we want, want to meet with the manager. We have a letter that we want to read you, you know? And then you could read the manager the letter. You had a group, the Los Angeles group, that's doing a nap-in. And they have materials for this, if this is something that you're interested in. They did, they went to a Chase branch with, it was a bunch of parents and young children. With their children, they created a storybook called, you know, Me, Mr. D., Mr. Diamond, who's the CEO of Chase. They read their storybook about how Mr. Diamond is so greedy, and he's not thinking about other people. And then they laid down and they took a nap on the floor of the bank branch. It was not an aggressive action, right? It's, you know, security is unlikely to sort of really try to manhandle a bunch of children, but it did disrupt people at the bank. We're looking at it. All the staff and all the customers were looking at it. So yeah, there's a variety of ways. You know, people have done art shows, like art galleries outside of bank branches. So they've gotten the art that we sent. They, you know, put it on cardboard, put it on easels, and had, you know, like a public art display where they've, you know, created some flyers that have a little bit more details about the bank financing of fossil fuels. So there's lots of things that you can do. And they're all fun. Many of them are fun.
And I guess, yeah, I see Maria's hand up.
Hi. How does this relate? I'm a little vague on this, but isn't there some action by the SEC to ask companies to indicate what percentage of their-- to ask companies to indicate what percentage of their portfolios are fossil fuel companies? Or what am I thinking about? And there's been a big backlash against that. So does anybody know what I'm talking about? And is this related to that at all?
I think you're talking about ESG, that is, environment, social governance, regulations that the SEC and other groups are engaged in rulemaking on. And the idea would be to expose more of, you know, the fossil fuels pollutant and things like that. Obviously, there's a lot of turmoil there.
But is it, would it relate to, I mean, where do we, where do we find out how much of their investing a bank uses for fossil fuel? Is it public because they're public companies? Is that how we find it out?
So the best resource I have for that is the Banking on Climate Chaos Report, which I had a screenshot of, but it's actually, it's like an incredibly rich document. Let me, let me pull it up and share the link. Yes, I think, as Leslie said, there's SEC rulemaking on ESG, investing, environmental, social, and governance investing, which is like sort of a hot category of investing, because people are, they're like, I actually don't want my investments to go to fossil fuel companies. And there's a lot of back and forth around, one, how real those funds are, and, you know, like how they're relatively unregulated. So to what extent is it actually, is your money actually not going to something? But also, various states are trying to create, Republican states are trying to create a culture war out of this. And there's also SEC rulemaking. And I'm really at the edge of my knowledge here, but I have colleagues who know a lot more about this, if this is something that you're interested in learning more about. And I believe scope two or three emissions, which is to say, like, there's the emissions that a company has in terms of like, using electricity at its actual buildings, or its actual, you know, plants. And then there's the emissions of delivering its products, right? With the cars and the emissions of its financial, that are associated with its financial holdings, right? So, you know, a bank could say, Citibank could say, well, all of our buildings are, the certified buildings, they're carbon neutral buildings, so we're good, which doesn't account for, right, anything that any of the money is doing. So that, SEC is also, I think, doing some rulemaking in that area. This is about as much as I, like, I personally am capable of doing.
It's not really related, it's sort of, it's just strictly the investing that the banks are doing. It's nothing else. It's strictly the amount of money they're using to invest in fossil fuels.
Yeah, I mean, that's what our campaign is on. But, you know, there's like, we're doing, we're organizing public protests, but we also have colleagues who are trying to work in the policy realm to get more regulation and disclosure there.
Okay, thanks.
And I think Rebecca, you had your hand up.
I do. I was interested in the idea of educating other people rather than necessarily protesting at a particular site. I don't know if you-- So I'm part of a couple of groups that study things, and I'm thinking that most of the membership of these particular groups is not knowledgeable about all the loopholes and all the interconnectedness of our lives. So is there a particular material that y'all have that would be good for a presentation a bit like this, I guess?
That is a great question, and I will have to ask my colleague, because yeah, popular education is a huge important part of this. People, I think, quite frankly, myself included, kind of like lays over when they start to talk about investing, bonds, financial services. And it's hugely impactful. So I'll check in and see if we have any popular education materials that we could share.
I mean, just, it's so interconnected. State retirement funds are huge investors in fossil fuel. The 529 plans, I mean, it's just, it's everywhere. And we are so unaware of it, that, you know, it would take a lot of us complaining, a lot, a lot of letters to the editor, lots of trying to get articles on TV. But I think that when people become aware, then they're equipped to take action. And not everybody's going to go to their bank and have a nap-in, although that sounds darling, I wish I had a little child. Anyway, just an education program.
Yeah, and you're so right about pension funds as well. You know, pension funds are hugely invested. Many pension funds are invested through, as I'm sure you know, through these, or like big asset managers like BlackRock and Vanguard, which means like our pension money is invested in fossil fuel companies. And in addition, pension funds are huge clients of the big banks, right? Obviously, like as a retail client, their business matters, but the amount of money that I have in the bank is very, very small compared to the amount of money that the New York State Teachers Pension Fund has in the bank, right? So if people are connected to their two pension funds, that's also a great way to do, to put pressure on these targets as well.
Teri, I see your hand up. You're muted.
I wanted to comment on that, because for Elder's Action Network, our social justice team has a campaign called Fix My Funds. And we're working with the Sunrise Project in educating investors how to talk to your asset manager. So it is difficult, and how do, what do you say them? And how do you demand that your money be invested in the way you value life? And what you want your investments to do? And so you could go on Elder's Action Network and see that campaign. And we've had, we've had one webinar already in terms of going role-playing, of how do you talk to your asset manager? What do you say? How do you do it? And so it's a very valuable training for that, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. I think one of the things that comes to mind for me is that this consumer education part, helping other people understand how the banks are playing a role in investments, and insurance companies are paying, playing a role in the climate crisis, is one of the things that we could do as an action, right? So going out, going out to my local Chase bank and handing out maybe some little like fact sheets that helps people understand that the connections between fossil fuels and climate change, and their specific bank, that's a great, to me, that seems like that's a great action, and an easy action that any, any of us can, can take on pretty easily.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll also say just to that, my colleague Sarah is working on a campaign called Customers for Climate Justice, which is doing some of the work, is doing some similar work to what you just mentioned, Teri, in terms of training people to speak to branch managers and others at their banks about this. So if you're a customer of one of these big banks, you can get plugged into Customers for Climate Justice and get trained on how to talk to your, you know, your branch manager at Wells Fargo, or your regional manager at Wells Fargo, from the perspective of somebody who does have money in the bank. So I put Sarah's email in the chat. And then I also want to answer a couple of questions in the chat. One is, we organize a Fridays for Future through the GAT.org, Third Act. So we, Stop the Money Pipeline is a coalition that includes many of those organizations. So there's a lot of groups working on this. We're working, generally speaking, in collaboration and communication with one another. So if you're hearing about banks, asset managers, or other finance work in other places, we're probably, we're all probably talking to each other. And then, do we know anyone doing guerrilla theater tactics? Yeah, we definitely have had people use guerrilla theater tactics, I think it's so fun. There's a group in New York City that does this sort of street theater thing, they call Maryland's, and they have a song that is like Diamonds Are a Girl's Best Friend, except it's Diamond, Jamie Diamond is oil's best friend. So they have a bunch of people dressed in, you know, the pink dresses from that video. I think, you know, and so they'll do, they do like a street theater performance for Chase. So yeah, street theater is awesome, we love it, it's an important part of, yeah, important part of the work.
Well, thank you so much. We are about at the 45-minute mark, like we had agreed to at the beginning of this call. But thank you so much for such an informative session. And I really hope that y'all have gotten inspired and want to go out and do some action in your local community. It can be a big action, it can be a small action. So think of what you might be able to do. You could get a couple of friends together and do something together, or pull your chapter together, or some of the other organizations that you work with, and really utilize these tools and resources that Stop the Money Pipeline has produced. And I think more importantly, this, the training and coaching opportunities. You know, this is one thing that as Elder's Climate Action with a staff of 1.5, we don't, we don't have the capacity to ever be able to provide this one-on-one training in these ways. And so this is a great opportunity to sort of help connect all of our membership up with some advocacy activism training and help deepen your level of engagement. So thank you all. Leslie, looks like you might have one last thing to add?
Well, just for the people who've attended, is there going to be any, anything set out with some of the resources on it so that we can go start it, do our own learning?
So I will send out, it won't be till Monday, since today is Friday, and it's the end of the day. But Monday, you will receive a follow-up email with the recording from this call, and then any links that are dropped in the chat box, and anything else, any of the other links that Ariel has provided to us. So look in your emails on Monday for a message from me, and you will see all of that information. And please share that information out with other people, with people in your community, and especially those upcoming, those three upcoming trainings that Stop the Money Pipeline is offering in September. So make sure you get yourself registered for those trainings and share out, try to pull together some folks in your local community to help you do an action. Rob, it looks like you have your hand up, one last quick comment or question? Rob, did you want to say something?
No, nope, sorry.
Excellent. Well, I'll leave it there, and thank you so much, Ariel, and thanks, everybody, for joining us tonight.